Welcome, everybody. It's June 7, 2022. This is the regular city council meeting of the West Liberty City Council. Presenting myself and council members Sagorius and Dominguez. Yes. Yes. And Omar.
Yes.
And Diane.
Yes.
And we will call to order. Diane. Yeah, we're in order, right? All right, thanks. So we will go to the approval of the agenda. We do need to table item B on the consent agenda. The City Clerk Treasurer February report for the 21st meeting. So that will be amended. Do I have a motion? Motion to table item B. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so we will table the City Clerk Treasurer report for February 2022 for the June 21st meeting. And then, so do we have an approval for the amended agenda? Motion to approve amended agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved 5-0. We will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. With item B obviously removed. Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. We will move on to item four, vendor voucher claims. We have a motion to approve vendor voucher claims list one in the amount of Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes 4-1. Move on to vendor voucher claims B, list two, in the amount of $8,400 for James Keel reimbursement for City of West Liberty economic grant matching. Motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Vendor voucher claims list two in the amount of $8,400. That passes 5-0. We will move on to public comments and our correspondence. This is the time to decide for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than two minutes with everybody here. I will hold everybody to the two minutes given the size of the agenda tonight. Start with public comments.
Good afternoon. We're here again to hear our voices. Maria Díaz, mi nombre, y soy una ciudadana de West Liberty. My name is Maria Díaz. I've been a resident of West Liberty for 20 years. Estamos siendo la voz de todo el pueblo de West Liberty que está ejigiendo justicia y igualdad. And we're here to be the voice for West Liberty and to bring about justice. Parece que estamos aquí para agarrar una respuesta de ustedes. No sé si eso es posible, que es el siguiente paso. And we're here today to know what the next steps are. We don't know if that's what's going to be talked about today. We would like to see that possible. Les agradecemos el apoyo que estamos viendo de ustedes. We thank you for the support we see from you guys. Y queremos respetar que es, que sí podría ser sencillo para la gente de West Liberty. Sin complicaciones, sin ahí de social security o algo, lo que estamos pidiendo mucho. It was like something like simple. From West Liberty, nothing that would require a social security, just like honest, basically. Y esto es todo lo que estamos pidiendo y se les agradece su apoyo. And it's all we're really asking. And we just thank you for your support.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Lupalma. Good afternoon. My name is Lupalma. Este estoy aquí también representando a muchos ciudadanos de la ciudad de West Liberty. And I am here also representing many of the residents of West Liberty. Nosotros como ciudadanas de West Liberty decidimos apoyarnos en Escucha Mi Voz. As citizens of West Liberty, we are here to support our hear our voices. Nosotros estamos aquí pidiendo, este primeramente, que no nada más queden tacos rotos. No sé cómo podría describir esto. Que sea todo lo que hemos luchado. Nosotros tenemos, no sé, medio año, tenemos más de medio año luchando por esto. And personally, we're this year, again, like we've been fighting this fight for over at least half a year. And we just want to be heard. Y nosotros creo que como todos los concejales de West Liberty saben, que nosotros es la única oportunidad que nuestra gente, la gente que trabaja duro en esta ciudad. And you guys as council members of West Liberty know that our people here, we're just, we work very, very hard. Con esta pandemia muchos de ellos fueron excluidos de todos los estímulos que dio el gobierno federal. And through this pandemic, you were frontline workers. And we were excluded from the stimulus checks that they had given everybody else. So nosotros estamos aquí porque ellos nos prometieron, tanto Omar tengo, puedo decir hasta nombres. Necesitaba mucho de ustedes, la alcaldesa, Dana, todos nos dijeron que iban a apoyarnos. And we're here because I can say my name, some people like Sagorius and Omar, that they would support us. No son dos personas, no son tres personas. Este tal vez podrían haber otras organizaciones en esta ciudad que podrían necesitar este dinero. Pero también nosotros es única, esta es una oportunidad única que nosotros tenemos. And it's not just only two or three people who need this money. It's all, not only our organization, it could be many others. It's the only opportunity that pretty much exists. Are others?
My name is Jeff. I'm a resident here in West Liberty. I farm north of town, here one mile north of town. I'm just here just basically at the last meeting there and stuff like that. I wanted to say something and I'm going to say it there. I want to thank the EMS and the fire department there. A nephew of mine, 2017 football game, broke both bones, his leg. Everybody heard the pop and stands. Kenny Morrison, Larry Miller, Kurt Heckman, Kurt Newcomb. They were the first ones there to respond. And if anybody's ever heard of a broken leg and stuff like that, that's a sickening feeling. Also, in August of 2018, we had a fire, burned down a machine shed, lost five, had five tractors. The planter, the grinder. Unfortunately, we saved the planter, saved two big tractors. I'm still farming today because of the fire department. I owe gratitude to them, Nick's department, West Branch department there and stuff. I cannot thank them enough. Both my parents have passed away. Both of them have had ambulance care taken to the hospital. If you've ever had a parent in a nursing home and you need assistance, they're there. If you, when you go home and stuff like that, when you tuck your kid in bed, think of your kids and stuff like that. The ambulance is going to be there for them regardless and stuff like that. Keep that in mind and stuff when you, when you're deciding on the life and the death of this town is depending on our fire department and our ambulance department. Every town, you go to every small town and the fire departments is the strength of the towns and stuff on that one there. For, you know, for the sake of this community. It's, they build it big enough for 5,000, 6,000, 10,000, 20,000 people. That station is built maybe too big for what they can handle right now. But right now, they are thinking of the future. And the future is Lewis Ridge building a new building here in town here. Are they going to build one here if they don't have a fire department? Just items to think about. There's just plain and simple there. So if anything, this resolution comes to a point where we resolve it tonight. We get it done. We quit messing around with our lives and stuff on at stake. So have a heart. I know we all do. Everybody in this room has been affected by, by, by the need for ambulance service, the need for a fire department, stuff like that. It's just plain and simple. I mean, these guys have all gone over their limit and stuff like that. To the point where, where they can't do much more. And we need paramedics. We need professional people there. But these people have the stake of being a volunteer. And they're holding up their brothers from, from 1950s. When you look at City Hall, it says fire station on, fire department on the building there and stuff. You guys are living in a building there with, Bill Klein is, is, is a city council member. And we can't bring Bill Klein back. But we got devoted men here and stuff that have done their share.
You have two minutes. Thank you.
Well, remember, I just have a couple of questions. One of them, I think the citizens need to know what your plan is if the fire department does leave or you're unwilling to negotiate because you can come up with all sorts of reasons. Lee Gert said in the index, a few other people said they were, Tara said how she was very proud of the departments. Called them experts in their field. You would think they would want to be able to negotiate with them. And I hope there's room to go and keep negotiating. I think that the fire department is willing to, you know? And I also think that I was very disappointed. I'd like Diane Barone to look at me and tell me that she thinks Tom Christensen hates the City of West Liberty.
I never said he hated.
Blaine, you said in the index that
I have never said he hated the city.
That they must hate the city if they're willing to walk. They, as in the fire department. That is a quote in the paper.
All right.
So they is Tom Christensen and Blaine Kelly and Kurt Heckman and Kirk Sickles. You're referring to those people. Those are people punked out for 35 years.
Larry, how long have we been trying to negotiate this?
Too long.
Way too long.
Too long. Yep. And how many offers has
Does this go in my two minutes as she interrupts me?
How, no, but I would prefer this not to be back and forth at this point.
I understand that. But he, he asked me a question and I'm answering it.
If you'd like to, I can also, we can also move on if you don't want to.
We need to keep doing it though. We can't let it go.
But if they're not willing to come to the table with us, which we've asked.
No, not the law.
We've asked. We've asked. How many times have we set up meetings? And nobody has
Zero. Zero. They have not agreed to do anything with us.
That's not true.
Well, I know the last one of the community center there was talking, having meetings. And I thought they had one planned, but then less planned one tonight. Both of them are here.
Why is it now rather than a year ago when we were trying?
Well, I have heard that the city manager talked to the fire department and the rural trustees. Had a nice conversation, said he'd get back to them. And has yet to get back to them. And I guess I could ask him, but he's not here tonight. He has no
I was probably wary.
And I don't want to give it, I, I should have said that Diane, but it just bothered me because I know you think a lot of community. But to say that about these men and women was not right. You did say that. You said they must hate the city.
The city. The city. We are the city.
No, the city are these people right here.
Why would they walk out on them, the citizens, if they're mad at us?
Try their hardest not to.
If they're mad at us, and that's who they're mad at, they're mad at us.
Then let's resolve it. That's all you have to say. Thank you.
Okay, I've been sitting here a long time and we've been trying.
Everybody knows me as the guy that gets kicked out all day. I'm not, I know I'm getting kicked out today, but if I do, I guess I didn't. But thing is that I want the council to please understand is tomorrow will be my, my year. Tomorrow will be my one year. And I've answered, I don't know how many God's calls. To where my family's wondering where I'm at half the time. You know what I'm saying? And I work with every last one of these people. There's not a single person here that's standing behind me that I haven't worked with at all. Okay? I would give my life for them guys. You understand? I mean, I really would. And I hear council members say, oh, well, they, they chose that. They volunteered for that. That's what they volunteered for. But so did you guys. You guys volunteered to sit here and hear our mouth. So for you to say you've been here a long time. So had they. Okay? What you guys need to also understand is you guys can't keep depending on this mutual aid. Okay? Me, I'd be scared to death to go in there with just two people without knowing that there's a rescue team outside for me if something goes wrong for me. Okay? We can't just sit back and watch one house after the next, after the next burned down because you guys want to depend on mutual aid for us. You guys can't expect that. I haven't seen none of you guys except for these three go on calls with us and see what it's like. Okay? I haven't seen you go on a call with us to see what it's like, not even, even witness us during training. I got my butt kicked about three weeks ago at a two-day training where I'm still tired from it. But yet I still get up every day and bust my butt to make sure that every last one of these people get a safe trip to the hospital or get their property safe. Every last one of them. And I'll be the first one at the station ready to go. Hey, oh well, I may be overzealous, so what? But guess what? I'm there ready to protect every last one of these people, including y'all. If y'all call right now, guess who would be at your house knocking at the door, yelling "fire department"? It'd be me and whoever else is with me. Okay? Y'all seriously need to just suck up your pride for a minute. Just get at a table somewhere. Do it tonight, just like I said. Do it tonight if you got to. Yeah, we got time. You know what I'm saying? Unless that pager goes off, is my time up? Oh well, my time is up, but I'm just letting you know.
Thank you.
Y'all, come on.
We have others.
Productment with West Liberty Fire Department and a resident of West Liberty, been here for 15 years, already graduated from high school. Anyway, I have a very darn good understanding of what the fire department wants out of the city. I have a very good understanding of what the fire department wants out of the fire department. I have a very good understanding of what the rural district wants out of our fire department. They've told me what they wanted. What I haven't heard yet to this day is what each and every one of you sitting on this city council wants out of the fire department or out of the rural department. It's absolutely absurd that we have to stand behind litigations. We have to stand behind closed doors. And none of you have been able to come out and tell anybody in this community what the city wants out of the fire department. You haven't said what you want out of any type of an agreement where I know that the fire department and the rural has made proposals and every stinking one of them have been shut down. And every stinking one of them has said that we can't discuss that due to litigations. Enough of the litigations. It's time to get resolution and talk as a group. And if you can't talk as a group, I don't know what the hell this city's going to come to. It's pretty sad. Real sad.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Nino Ca Campos. Soy miembro de Escucha Mi Voz.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Nino Ca Campos.
Ustedes saben que a raíz de este plan de rescate estadounidense denominada ARPA que se envió muchos sectores que están queriendo alcanzar una ayuda. A través de esta ayuda que mantuvo el gobierno federal denominado ARPA.
So government assistance, you know, that dominates everything.
Muchos grupos quieren conseguir una ayuda.
A lot of groups just want a lot of, just want assistance to help.
Nosotros representamos los trabajadores excluidos.
And we represent the excluded workers.
Ustedes saben que nosotros en Iowa City ganamos 3.5 millones de dólares después de un año de lucha.
And you know that Iowa City did get 3.5 million dollars after your fighting.
Porque todos jugamos un rol importante en la sociedad.
Because we all play a really important role in society.
Pero nosotros, los trabajadores excluidos, somos más.
But us excluded workers are more.
Al no tener beneficio ninguno.
Because we have no benefits.
Durante la pandemia.
During the pandemic.
Pero sí teníamos el beneficio de infectarnos contra el virus.
So we did have the benefit of infecting ourselves of the virus.
Pero no nos quedó otra opción porque teníamos que trabajar.
You didn't have another option because you had to.
Y la economía de este país siguió adelante gracias a la mano latina.
And this economy of this country kept moving forward because of the
Porque tal vez cuando alguno de ustedes iba a un restaurante a comprar comida rápida.
Because let's say you went to another like fast food restaurant to get
En esa cocina había un inmigrante cocinando pudiéndose infectar.
Because in that restaurant or that kitchen, there wasn't anyone working. That could be infected.
Cuando van a alojarse a los mejores hoteles, hay una hostipping que también se puede infectar.
If you go to a hotel, that housekeeper could be someone else who could get it.
Et cetera, et cetera, y puedo seguir toda la tarde.
And et cetera, et cetera, I can be going for the whole night.
Y entonces es justo
And so it's just
Que se le dio una ayuda a los trabajadores excluidos.
That you get help for, like for the worker.
Porque también ellos son esenciales en la comunidad donde viven.
Because they're also essential in the community that you live in.
No son un cero a la izquierda.
We're not just someone that's just to the right.
Porque ellos sienten como cualquier otro ser humano, sin importar la raza.
Because they feel like they are just as equal no matter what race.
Porque tal vez para el ser humano nosotros somos divididos genéticamente, humanamente.
Because maybe other people might think we're divided, but genetically we're all the same.
Pero Dios nos creó a imagen y semejanza y para Dios no hay barrera para ningún ser humano.
And God made us equally and God knows that there is no barrier between the
Entonces yo estoy aquí apoyando este grupo.
And so I'm here supporting you, this group.
Para que ustedes hagan lo correcto en esta tarde.
So that you guys can do the correcting during the attacks.
Y no establezcan barreras ni división entre los trabajadores excluidos y esenciales de West Liberty.
Try not to create barriers within the residents of West
Gracias y feliz tarde.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Do we have anybody on mine who wishes to speak?
Right now, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Por eso seguimos pagando impuestos. Aunque tuvo la pandemia, seguimos trabajando y seguimos pagando impuestos. No vivimos de agrarcis en este país. Por eso aquí estamos y no nos vamos.
Because even throughout this whole pandemic, we were still paying taxes. We didn't live here for free. We were paying taxes and still there.
All right, if nobody else wants to, I didn't miss anybody. Then we will move on to city council public comments or correspondence.
So we'd like to go first. I met with Tom, his brother, probably two or three of them. Trying to get some traction to this problem. And after 30, 45 minutes, we couldn't agree on anything other than we need to keep talking. But we would provide it with something called a memorandum of understanding that is, in my view, dead arrival. Because it provides nothing to negotiate and allow to us. I am not in any way, shape or form willing to translate the city properly, the city vehicles and so on to the fire department because this taxpaying problem. I'm trying to answer Mr. Heckman. Yes, I've been trying. I've been trying to talk to you. And I still don't know which one of you are the members of this committee that are trying to negotiate. Because obviously, we need committees. We are not going to three or four of us negotiate with 50 of you. See? But for the last 18 months, we haven't been able to make any progress because we don't see the other side.
Right.
And I also make clear a few years ago, probably eight years ago, the fire department saved my house from a fire. I am grateful for that. Larry Millie was there in no time, three minutes maybe. And jokingly, he said, "I'm saving my own buzzing house." Rushed better than So that is, I appreciate the fire department. I, I, I know how valuable your side to the community. But we need to get serious about negotiating. Negotiating, if you're negotiating in place, give and take. You're not giving any.
Well, that's not entirely, so let me, let me just speak real quick. So the MOU, as I understand it, and fire department, you're here to correct me if I'm wrong, please. The MOU is not part of this discussion. The discussion this evening is about that letter of commitment that was sent to all of you. And whether, so we can, we can move forward with that letter of commitment without agreeing to any of the things in the MOU. Am I correct in that?
That's correct, yeah.
So, so, so those on, yes, and I have agreed and I've said from the beginning here in these meetings that the three things we could not agree to legally. But the letter of intent that we're going to discuss at some point this evening does have, has no demands in it other than working together. Right, so there is, so, and we, we've worked with our legal team to make sure that that we've worked with our legal team to make sure that that doesn't put us in any sort of bind in any litigation or it doesn't have us come to the table a step behind or anything. It gets everybody at the table on equal ground. It gets us to be talking to negotiating without any of the preconceived, you know, the pre, the preconditions that were set forth by that memorandum of understanding, which I've been, you know, pretty vocal about not being in favor of for the, for the reasons of not, not for the end goal left, but for the reasons of, including what council member Sagorius brought up, which was the, the trans, the, the property issue, right? So, so I just want to correct you there that, yes, there, that, you know, that's, that's the old, the new. What we're trying to work on tonight is just this commitment to move forward. And it's very simple. And as you all have stated, that's what we've been doing. So, yes, is it symbolic? Is it pomp and circumstance? Is it bureaucracy? Is it all these things that people claim to dislike so much? But it's, it's a necessary step to, not codify, but to, to solidify what, you know, we say we've, we've been doing for the past year. And it will get us the time we need to move forward. And there's a whole bunch of other things that I'd like to bring up when we And there's a whole bunch of other things that I'd like to bring up when we get to that point of the meeting. But I did want to, because we're not talking about them.
All I can say is it takes two to tango and I haven't seen the other side.
I have.
And I'll talk, when we get there, I'll talk later about the over a hundred and fifty pages of emails that I've read that, that proves that there was commitment on both sides. And, but there may have been misunderstandings because it appears that Diane might have been left out. Kara might have been left out. And lots and lots of these things. Jose wasn't left out because he was on the Public Safety Committee. So he has more of an understanding than Kara and Diane might. Is what, how, I read through every single one of these, but I'll get to that.
Sounds like, Jose, you're willing to talk and they're willing to talk, correct?
Tom Christensen, Assistant Chief.
I'm gonna let you speak, Doug, but we moved on to city council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, but.
But I've been on thirty, thirty-nine years. And this is why we're here tonight, to try to bring this new step out so we can all negotiate on this. And work together. And let us do what we're volunteered to do. Let you guys do what you're volunteered to do. And all work together for the common good of our whole community and our outer community. I don't think that's too much to ask.
Thank you. And there are, again, there are some facts and some things that I'd like to discuss with everybody when we get to that, when we get to that part of the meeting that I was just made aware of. That is going to be spoken about, yes. So are there other city council, unless, Councilmember Zacharias, do you have more to add? I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Are there other comments from city council or correspondence at this point?
Only that I received two recently. One was from a rural resident and one was from a city resident in regards to fire department. Those, those are the only correspondence I received. And then I did want to make note on a separate issue is to have Park and Rec check the lights at Rondy Blue Park because as of nine thirty last night, they weren't coming on. And that's all I have.
So unless there's other from council, city manager who's not here or city clerk, public commenter.
Comments, I provided a copy of a letter from the Auditor of State.
Okay, so everybody here with us here, we're going to get through the whole business stuff. Item A, ordinance two zero two two zero five one seven dash zero one. An amendment to Title Six, Health and Sanitation, Chapter One, Harbaging Refuse, Section Six dash one dash eleven, rates. This is the second reading. Any discussion? Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. That, that is five zero to move forward with that and we'll move back to a third reading. Item B, ordinance two zero two two zero five one seven dash zero two. An amendment to City Code of Ordinance to the City of West Liberty by amending provisions pertaining to residential lot requirements, Title Ten, Chapter Six, residential requirements, Section one dash ten dash six dash B dash one, Section two dash ten dash six B dash five, Section three dash ten dash six B dash six, Section four dash ten dash six C dash one, establishing zero lot line dwellings. Second reading with consideration to waive the third reading.
Motion to approve the second with the, to waive the third.
Second, any discussion? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. That will pass five zero and we will not have a third reading of that one. Item C, ordinance two zero two two zero five one seven dash zero three. An amendment to Title Ten, Chapter Ten, Section Ten dash one dash one, definitions of occupation, second reading with consideration to waive the third reading.
Motion to approve second with the waiver of third.
Second, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. That also passes five zero. And we will not be reading that one again. Item D, city council discussion and review with Finance and Ordinance Committee meeting.
Dana Mayer, as Chair of the, Chair of the Finance and Ordinance Committee, I just wanted to review the meeting we had on May twenty-seventh with fellow council member Dana Dominguez. We listened to Escuchame Vos as they attended the meeting as well. We also had city manager, city clerk in attendance, Father Guillermo Trevino and Father Dennis Martin, as well as David Goodner from the Iowa City Catholic Worker attend. During the discussion, we did review several line items for the ARPA funding. I'm just going to go through what we talked about. Basically, Escuchame Vos request, City Hall Phase Two, Kimberly Park Pool, Police Department Vehicles, and then various other infrastructure. We also discussed review of staffing for various departments within the city and also the fiscal year 2021 audit review and recognition of the most recent event that had come up in regards to being contacted by the state of Iowa for, from the Office of Auditor of State because they had received a petition from citizens of West Liberty to review our audit and basically do a re-audit to find out whether or not they will approve what was submitted or do another audit again. So we're just waiting on their determination. And we talked about budget amendment for 2022 as we have a few additional expenses in association with the library and the electric department. And then some miscellaneous items for just regular bookkeeping in regards to reconciliation claims and correcting comments that were on the most recent 2021 audit. So that was basically our meeting that went pretty lightly.
Any questions from council?
Will we be explaining what we talked about with the percentages and all of that?
In the next item.
Yeah, in the next one.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Yeah, so then we'll, there's no vote, we're just the discussion of what happened at the meeting. So we will move on to item E, which is city council discussion and appropriate follow-up for Escuchame Vos of West Liberty ARPA funds request. Initially, so do we want to make sure that we speak in shorter sentences so that it can be translated? Do we need translator, translator here?
Initially, Escuchame Vos came to the city in request of half of the ARPA funds. I believe the city is only getting five hundred and twenty-two thousand total. We've got half of it so far. But in the whole scheme of things, that amount is a mere drop in the bucket in comparison to other communities. I'm just going over, I don't know if you need to tell them that. I'm just reviewing for the public. So it's just a mere drop in the bucket in comparison to other communities like Johnson County, even Muscatine County, City of Muscatine, City of Iowa City, who've gotten upwards of millions of dollars. We don't qualify for that. So we have to be very austere to a point with how we divide up the funds to what they were meant for, which is to help in the event that we had with the pandemic, to assist with the community so that the people of this community that were affected and that serve this community could benefit. We did talk about that request. Unfortunately, at this point in time, unless we know anything since that, the county, the Muscatine County, has not been willing to chip in.
Well, we haven't, we haven't asked yet.
Okay, so yeah, this is.
If they say no, that would be a big surprise.
Yeah, okay. So we don't know what the county is doing.
So, so basically what we, can I? Okay, so what we talked about at the meeting is that we did, we kind of agreed upon a percentage that was still allowed us to appropriate some funds or some of the other things on the list as well that we would want to talk with you all about as well. We thought the city could would pledge seven hundred dollars of up to two hundred people. Escuchame Vos was very heavily involved in helping Johnson County, helping people get signed up, making sure all the guidelines, making sure everything was in order. I think we got a lot more information at the ordinance committee of things that we kind of had on question. So at the finance committee, we were comfortable saying we could start with the seven hundred dollars. And after that, for the second portion, we would appeal to the county to try to chip in to help us with another payout if needed.
Sometimes, sometimes us pledging some money is enough of a boost for other, other entities to also want to jump. And this would be an opportunity for West Liberty to sort of lead the way for that, for our citizens and people.
So one of the issues that I brought up a lot is how do we do this with administrative staff that we have? We just simply can't do that. And they explained the way that they supported Johnson County into doing this and that they would do it at no charge. Because another thing we had is how do we, how do we pay someone to do this? That takes a big chunk of their administrative cost out of that, that chunk of money that's not a lot to begin with. They said, we'll do it, we'll do it at no charge.
Well, they did five percent, right? Didn't we talk about a five percent?
Yeah, but I think that's within the amount.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But we do want to continue to work with them. And we were given a good template to go off of with Johnson County and how they have been able to implement this. And David has been kind enough to kind of explain how it can be done at a city level, even though we don't have much to give, it would still make a big impact for these families that didn't get anything. And we also talked about how this could also not just help the essential workers who've been doing the work and showing up, but this could help a lot of people who didn't get that first round of COVID relief funds because they were excluded. This is possibly people with disabilities or on their own but whose caretaker claims as a dependent, they didn't get anything. People who were behind in child support, they didn't get anything. People who were in a nursing home, you know, who might have, might be a dependent on someone else's taxes, they also didn't get anything in 2020.
Did I explain more?
I, I, I say it was our federal government who wasn't being sensitive to all the people that they left out, including taxpaying essential workers. So in what we provided, this would also help anybody, anybody who was excluded for those COVID relief funds and that they could also apply. And they agreed, yes, we'll help those folks to get what they need.
To hurdles down, yes.
Did I miss anything? Okay. As to the other things, we did discuss other infrastructure like funding. ARPA funds, yes. But we did discuss, you know, money's going to like the Kimberly Park Pool or City Hall Phase Two or, you know, it was brought up even to put into our general, you know, like, infrastructure upgrades. But those items require a much larger expense pool, a much larger budget than what little this is going to have an impact. The amount of money that we're getting is so small that is going to have such a small impact on such a large budget item like a new pool, for instance, because that's going to be several, several millions of dollars to upgrade and redo our new pool.
And there are other ways of getting those funds.
And there are other ways, correct. So we decided, let's use, utilize these ARPA funds for something that we could utilize for the now and for the community, which is what it was designed for, as well as being able to see the results. And Escuchame Vos has been really kind in providing a lot of information. So we didn't have to really go and research things like how they were saying how in this community, this person, this, the economy boosted this much from providing these citizens this little bit of money, you know? And, and they had other examples too. So they really worked hard for this. And it's, it's not a lot of money, but I, like Kara said, it's going to make a much bigger impact on our community than people can see from the forefront.
So, and one of the things that we also talked about with Escuchame Vos and with this, these ARPA funds would be, let's, let's set, essentially, because this money is coming in two sets. We already have one chunk, one half, and we're getting another half of it July, correct? And what, seven hundred dollars maxed out at two hundred people, that doesn't even eat up our first chunk. So it was one of those, like, let's start there and then focus our efforts on, like Kara was saying, other ways that this can be directly impactful for our community. And may I share, like, with the, so, and one of the things we talked about is there is a possibility in our community of opening up a mental health wellness center here in West Liberty, which our schools are telling us our need, our citizens are telling us, hey, you walk down the street, you ask a stranger, they will tell you they need help, they need help. And so this is something else that I'll be speaking to council about because I feel like these ARPA funds would go, again, minimum impact or minimum cost for maximum impact, which is what I think we need to do and be smart with these funds. Because, you know, other cities, you know, who got millions and millions of dollars are putting it into different structure, are putting it because the law allows that. But since we didn't even get enough to do the Rainbow Road project, you know, like, why not put it, these like micro things to really, really sort of enhance the wellness and health? We know the statistics, the data are there that people are suffering, their mental health is suffering because of the pandemic. So, so that was something else that we talked about with the funds. And that's something, I mean, you, it's, it's, yeah, so.
And the organization is already in existence.
It is.
NAMI, so it's not like we have to reinvent that wheel. We would just simply bring it into our fold here.
And full disclosure, it's, it's an organization that I work for.
But, and it's, it would be like a satellite office or satellite entity here in our community, which would provide peer support, which is basically, the governor of Iowa has started, has identified peer support for those folks who don't know it. It's basically people who are trained in mental health but who, who aren't trained therapists. But they are trained, they have to do so many hours of training before. And they're basically people who are recovering themselves from mental illness or substance abuse, who've basically been through some stuff and are there to support people in a drop-in way or in an appointment way who are also going through very similar things. So it's.
So it's peer support, the data, again, and I can provide these data to anybody who's interested in it. The data on peer support, I see you all say, the data on peer support, um, uh, filling that gap, because in the state of Iowa, we do not have enough therapists. We do not have enough mental health care, um, particularly, uh, in our county as well. So this is, so, um, uh, along the lines with the medical community, looking into other providers, right? PAs and nurse, nurse practitioners, and this is, that's what peer support is. It's another way of, of giving people mental health support. So, and that's what these would support. Jose.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I came here in ninety-four, stayed here, stayed only two years in West Liberty, and here I am. After, uh, I got here, I spent ten years working with them, lose reach. So I know what it's like to work there. I know what people here go through and people working at Tyson and any other meatpacking facility in the nation is one of the hardest jobs. And from loose reach to West Liberty Foods to this moment, this community has benefited enormously from the presence of documented and undocumented workers. There was a time of loose reach when forty, fifty percent of the working force there was illegal and witnesses. So to me, this claim to fourteen hundred dollars from the excluded workers of this fund is just right. Because on the backs of documented and undocumented people, the farmers around us have been, have become millionaires. And what we're doing is saying, yes, to the excluded funds is just giving a little piece of the pie once they are taxpayers, their kids are citizens, and the money is going to stay here in town. So I'm in favor of giving them the all amount of fourteen hundred dollars regardless of, and I understand the logistics of this, to the excluded funds.
And I, and I, as I understand it, it wouldn't be something that we would be dispersing. We wouldn't be, um, administering. This is funds that would go to the organization and it would be upon their responsibility.
As you said, we will pledge, if we pledge, can we do seven hundred dollars later?
I mean, it would be up to chair or finance to put it on the agenda. Um.
How hard does that work to pledge for extra?
By resolution. I think, I, I prepared the resolution or not yet?
We haven't prepared the resolution. We're bringing the recommendation to the citizens and go to a resolution.
You can't get fourteen hundred tonight, you can get seven hundred later. I mean, or seven hundred. If I go there, we should do fourteen hundred.
Well, that's why we thought. That, that way we would have some support with the county and they would be able to share. Because, because, um, that, that was the purpose of that. Because that would be, that would be half of the money. And with, we also have other avenues that, you know, with staffing at PD EMS, uh, we also wanted to supplement the sidewalk program to help, um, residents who have to do the repairs, supplement some of that, because it's expensive, uh, sidewalk expense repairs. So that's why we still wanted to have something, but we also wanted the county to.
Let's make sure, make sure something tonight, that's okay.
But at least something, we could, we could make a commitment towards something tonight. Uh, but, or at least discuss if that is the commitment. But I am, I am, just want to make sure we understand that there is such a small pool. And we have, you know, lots of other avenues.
That's outstanding. Uh, I don't believe the county of Muscatine, it will ever support any other.
Is the City of Muscatine doing anything as a city?
They won't.
Put a lot of pressure.
The county also put a lot of the ARPA funds into just the City of Muscatine. So I think if I show up or Jose or any of us show up to an ex supervisor meeting, say, hey, there's more people than, than just Muscatine and Muscatine County. And we have a lot of people that could benefit if the, the county could just, you know, chip in a little.
Yeah, right.
That's the purpose of mine. Because I know they have been to the supervisors and got shut down, but I'm willing to, to go again and be like, hey.
Historically, the Board of Supervisors had never supported West Liberty.
I know.
We can make a change.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, uh, what we discussed at Finance Ordinance Committee. Um, do I have any other discussion with the council? So what would be a proper motion if we were to vote just to commit to, just to commit just to seven hundred?
Yeah.
Can we?
Just, just nothing. Just open the possibility for competitive.
Fourteen hundred and so sure.
So seven hundred to fourteen hundred dollars. I don't know, that's you, Kara, because we talked about that at the meeting.
Well, right now, I just want to talk about what we have. Well, my vote would be for the seven hundred. So, right now.
So apparently, right now, you're under the, um, Madam Mayor and council members, you have, um, you can make the recommendation with a consensus vote and then based on that, how that proceeds, then you can come back with a resolution. Or how it's going to be done and, and all of that, because that would be, need to be a part of the resolution.
Just because it's not on for action tonight, you can't take an official vote, but you can agree to put it on the agenda and make a consensus that that's.
So then I would motion to, um, call for a consensus, consensus?
Just make in consensus.
All you, all you do is just to, you don't, you can't do it officially.
Oh, okay. So do we all, do we all agree that we want to start?
Put it on the next agenda?
For the seven hundred. Was for the seven hundred to start off with, with the plan to also appeal to the county to help provide the other half. And also consider, you know, listening to their appeals of maybe more money when we get our second. Does that sound okay?
So that, so what your, so that your consensus is, I have a note saying, uh, to the next agenda, uh, the recommendation of seven hundred to include, um, so again, as a consensus, um, as a line item on the next two agendas.
So we will need, Kara and I will need to get with the Squitcher Mibos to, to create more of a plan and write the details before then. Yeah, or at least get with, uh, David on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll just want to make, and I'm, okay, we just want to make sure that we have enough time to have the attorney review. Oh, or documentation.
Okay. Yeah, then we probably should do that pretty expediently and so that there is enough time to support attorney review.
The more detail you can provide, the better.
The more detail in terms of how it's going to be dispersed or, or what the organization does.
Okay.
Yeah. So perhaps maybe like this week we can get together. Okay. And we, so we don't need a consent vote or scratch that. Any other discussion for that before we move on?
I would like to be on the record that it is a very completely with a seven hundred dollar figure. And then propose the fourteen hundred.
Okay, so we will move on to item S, Resolution two zero two two zero six zero seven dash two eight, a resolution to sign a letter of commitment with, or between the City of West Liberty, West Liberty Rural Fire and EMS District and West Liberty Fire and EMS Association Incorporated. So we have this in our packet as the final, um, the final back and forth that I was talking about. Um, with the, with the, with the consent, or not with the consent, with the advice of, of legal, um, making sure that this doesn't put us behind in any litigation. It doesn't, um, weaken our, our stance. It's basically just saying, we will continue to do, um, what we are, what, you know, you are all saying we are doing. Um, and before we get into, um, a, a discussion about this, there are a couple of things that I, I feel like I should, I think I need to share, um, with the council, uh, that I was just made aware of not too very long ago. Uh, and the first one, and, and I hate to, to do this when he is not here. Um, but the, the, uh, the city manager, um, does not, did not have a comprehensive um, and cohesive backup plan, um, for, for what is going on. Um, there, for example, uh, any mutual, so if we're talking about relying on mutual aid, yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry, it, I have a, I have hearing loss when it, when there's background noise, so if I was not being very clear. My thanks. Okay. So, um, where did I leave off? Oh, so for example, um, one of the things that needs to happen for mutual aid, um, that he, so we have a contact with the person who, with Chris Jasper, who's the person who, um, who is, was helping us with the, the mutual aid agreements and, and tell it, you know, telling city manager what that looks like, um, had, had, and told him that he needed to, uh, appoint or that an interim fire chief in order to kind of move mutually forward, we needed an interim fire chief should, um, the, the fire department walk, uh, tonight. Um, and up until, uh, you know, four or five hours ago, um, it was understood that that person had been identified and could help with any transition that was going to be happened. However, that person was spoken to and that person did, uh, so there was, there's some inconsistencies. Um, that person did not agree, uh, to be the interim fire chief. Uh, so we would, yes, so we have no, we would have no interim fire chief and no ability because this was just brought to my attention. It was just learned by city administration. There was no notes on this. We got a, a very sparse skeletal plan for this backup. Um, and again, I'm sorry that, that Mr. Holdland is not here to respond to what I'm saying right now. And I do realize that, but it needs to be said. Um, so I'm not trying to attack anybody. I'm just, I'm stating the facts and the facts are, is that we don't have a fire chief nor do we have the ability tonight procedurally to appoint a fire chief because it was not on the agenda. So not signing, that, that alone is, is worrisome to me. Not signing this, not giving us more time, not allowing our volunteers to continue to work through October first puts this city in danger. And I, I have been very guarded with using that term. And I do not use that term puts our city in danger lightly. Like, there is no, from what I've seen, and I have been, I have asked, and I have not been included, which is another problem that we will be addressing. But I had, I have not, I have not seen a plan. I have not seen a comprehensive plan for any of this. I do not know how mutual aid is going to work. If somebody on council can enlighten me how mutual aid will work, I just, mutual aid is great and we respect our partners, we respect what they do. But if it adds even two minutes to a response time, if it adds, if it's, if it, if we don't, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing, and that is because what needed to happen has not happened to get us here today to June seventh. So again, and I've asked you all an email, but I will ask you again, again, I am asking you to please say yes to this, to this letter of commitment because there is no viable second option. And I have avoided, you know, I, there, there's always been the second option, the second option, and we've asked, and we've asked, and we've asked, and it has not shown itself. And now it has been shown to me today that it is there, that is correct. So I, I don't know how in good conscience we cannot agree to do what we've already said we're doing so that we can have more time, it's this extended deadline to October first, given this information, because this is, again, this is information that just came to me, um, today, three hours before this meeting.
Just say yes.
And can I add, please? I would also add, like, Lee was kind enough to give me a stack of emails for the past year just so I could catch up to how maybe all of this was, um, tried to, tried to be negotiated and things like that, but, um, and I did read through every single one, Lee. I didn't, I mean, you do so much for us, I want to make sure that, you know, I'm reading through that. So I have a lot that, of more of understanding that I would love for Kara and Diane to also understand, which we can have these discussions, um, and what I found, and, and I think it'll clear up a lot if we have that, that extra time too, that we can work with the fire department and say, whoa, 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 this was a huge misunderstanding and here it is in black and white. And it was not just the city, it was the fire department, it was the attorneys, it was everybody. And, and this is like, uh, the Bible of from the beginning to the end. And, and it clears up a lot and I want the council to be able to see all of that and to talk about it. And, um, yeah.
I mean, because it rips open a whole bunch of other things, um, policies and procedures and things that this council will be, be needing to address.
They will. And that's what I want for this community. I want to have a good city administration where our staff isn't, like, working so hard because we don't have enough staff and where we are always questioning with this is right or this is right because we have an outdated code, which I know the city manager and past council has been trying to get updated and stuff like that. But like, this has really been pulling us back and I guarantee it, if we don't approve us to get more time and we have all our volunteers walk out, we're never going to get there. Like, we're, because we're going to have to scramble and figure out how to protect our citizens and.
And that's, I mean, that's, it's, it's, scrambling is a good word for it. And I don't know how that can be accomplished tonight if, if the fire department gives, you know, the end of the meeting or, you know, or midnight, you know, whatever the case, there's not enough time. Because.
And just the fact I will share that I learned from a fireman, not someone from this department, but from another department, keep in mind when we're talking about mutual aid, a fire doubles in size every minute.
Well, not only, thank you, and not only that, um, we have some very special things going on in our county. We've got West Liberty Foods, um, and I have, you know, the, the firefighters, mutual aid would not be trained in that plant to, you know, so, and, and from what I understand, there has been concerns raised by our mutual aid partners, um, about should something happens. about should something happens, happen at West Liberty Foods, that could affect a whole bunch of people and the future of this town, given their plans, right? And so, um, these folks are trained, they know that plant, they know what to do, we've had incidents there where people have done exactly what they're supposed to do. And there's a history there, and with nobody in charge of transferring knowledge, transferring anything, because of, again, back to this procedural, if you want to keep it procedural, lack of a fire chief, like, I, 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 I don't, I don't feel like we have any other choice, I mean, it's obviously, it's also what I want, but it's, it's, I, I don't know what else, what else we would do. Please.
I know, us here, new here, our intentions come here was to do good. Obviously, we want to do the right thing and move forward, I know there's been years of distress, years of discommunication, we have missed, like, years of mistrust, but like, if we sign this today, I think we can all clear that slate. I think everybody will be on good terms, everybody will move forward, everybody can start agreeing on things. Obviously, we all have our, our views, and we all have our, what we want, what we don't want, but I think this is the time that we can actually come together and speak our minds and speak our voices. I understand, like, what they always talk about, like, we've been trying to negotiate back in, back in the day, but I wasn't here, but now we are here and we're trying to make that happen and make it work, and I know you're probably stressed out from years and years of talking about like, miscommunication and that. Yeah, no, I understand that, and it's, and it's a phase, but now, why can't we just start fresh with fresh minds? And fresh intentions, and have things move forward, like, I'm not here to bring any more stress on anybody else, like, I'm stressed out too, we've been here five months since we started. And you, I mean, there's times that I go, I, we are, at night, we just, we're stressed out, we've hit every idea, we've hit every, every solution that we've tried. And I'm not, I'm not, I have, I have nothing against any of you guys. Like, if we're gonna work as a team, I'm, I am certain we can make great things happen in this community. Not just for individually, whatever you guys have on your mind, or whatever happened in the past, you gotta let that go. This is new future, new beginnings, and sometimes new things are scary to, to proceed into, but sometimes new, new things make for great outcomes.
Me, the bottom line is very, very basic, the city has two obligations, one is to provide police police force and fire protection, that's the bottom line. For me to sign this commitment, I can see your point, is I would like to see from the fire department a committee of three, five members, right now, before the end of this night. And we can work on the schedule. Meeting once a week.
I would remind you, the rural is part of this whole, so.
Well, I would remind you that this is a dire situation.
I couldn't agree more, which is all the more reason to give a equal representation.
And the rules here too.
Well, the letter of the commitment also includes, it, it includes the rural fire districts and EMS, so they will be signing that, but let me remind you too, Jose, you don't have to sign anything, this is for the mayor and the city clerk. This is for the mayor to sign it, and then the city clerk to attest it. And that's it, and the public safety committee is, is working off what you and Robbie started and, and things like that, and, and will do a lot of the work. And if you want to be more included too.
Yeah, we have, we're not opposed of. We're not here to degrade anybody. We have.
But I would like to see a substantial change in adding to the both sides.
Both sides.
Get to that agreement and, and put this business to rest.
I agree.
Our committee right now.
Absolutely.
And what does this do with the litigation?
It will do nothing, because the litigation with the rural trustees, we will not let that litigation go until we have an agreement in place.
So if this agreement is, are you talking this commitment letter or 2080?
No, the, the, the final agreement.
A resolution of, of some sort. The 2080.
Well, well, there's, there's so much in these, this email train too, where we were so close. So I, as a new, fresh person, and Omar is a new, fresh person, want to talk, talk about that with the rule, like, you know, just get down to the details, like, why were we so close, let's just talk about that, because I feel like we're still really close. Like, I feel like this is, this can happen, we just, and I don't want to minimize anybody in here that have been blasted on Facebook, or in the paper, or anything like that, that is not a clean, fresh slate, it's not to minimize the, the damage that's been done. I think there, there's gonna be times for us to, to repair those too, but it's gonna be very strategic and, and somebody who's committed to making sure that people can, can move forward together in those relationships. In these emails too, I saw what Bob was talking about, when he said, this is not easy, and when we took our oath, he sat there and said, you will lose friends over this. It's in these emails, it's like I was reading these emails tearing up. And I don't want that to happen to us.
If Jose is willing to get a committee and fire department committee, and he wants to meet once a week, that shows commitment to me, so I think that's fantastic.
I think Dick and I can put a committee together tonight too. Wouldn't be too hard.
Better, yeah.
I, I can't commit to the rest of the trustees, we would have to meet and, you know, both agree, but I feel very strongly that if a final agreement is signed, the lawsuit would go away. But it won't happen until that gets placed.
As a show of good faith, I would like to ask the fire department leadership to make sure some of your members stay away from that cesspool that is the voices of West Liberty. There are possessions there that are to be repaired.
Well, and whose team has comments that were made, so. I have not believed in all the words.
Yeah, and the chief has told his members to stay off of social media, to be clear, but they are their own people, you know, but.
They're just sick and tired of being sick and tired.
Yeah, I know, that's it.
Let's agree, let's do something now, it's tonight, or it's done, and if your house gets on third row, we're gonna be there.
I will agree to stay away from social media, if you can agree as well.
I have no presence in social media.
I'll make sure it stays away.
We all want the same thing, but just, yeah, get the rest together and do it.
Lock the doors and then it's done.
Like I said, there's a lot, there's a, there's so many ideas going on, and then these emails really told that story, and I, I, all I see is hope in the emails. And I see places where I can see there's opportunities to repair relationships and, and, and be the, the middle person that can work with, even if it's between two people, like, saying, okay, this is, this is how I'm seeing things. Let's fill in the gaps, let's, let's start fresh together, you know what I mean? My harmonizing, yeah, is one of my strengths. I've literally been clinically tested on what my strengths are, and that is one of them.
But I can't do it that far.
No, I think we can, it, it's all in here, we can do it, we can.
I would like to remind the people that two years ago, November the 2nd, we have elections, and this is, this act, you're elected city government. And you are a group of volunteers. But we need to keep that in mind going into negotiation.
Jose, let me ask you this question, if you, if you think there was a new election for city council tomorrow, do you think you three would still be on the city council?
Probably not, and I, let, let me tell you, I'm not so sure that we're not gonna run again. So if you're gonna wait, you're not gonna help, or, yeah.
This is not a helpful conversation, folks, let's keep it back to helpful conversations, okay? I have to say, keep it civil.
I would, I would hope that through this, it's gonna make our community stronger. Through this, you might see other sides of the council as well, and would want them to run again, and say, if you guys can put away your differences, if you guys can put away your differences, and then we can come and make this great thing, why wouldn't you want them to run again? Because there's a lot of people on councils and in politics that are absolutely not gonna change their minds, but I see good in every single person up here. So. So just keep that in mind, Jose. So with that, I mean, is there any other?
Sorry, no, 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 you're fine, I, I was there, no, is there other, is there any other points that we'd like to bring up?
Madam Mayor, I have my team, Dog, Eric, Minnie, myself, and Blanca.
I'd have to think about, I'm assuming I get, I'm the one who would be appointing our team, or if there's volunteers here, obviously. Numbers and.
So, I'm, I'm not sure what, what the city councils, if it has a policy or a code or ad hoc committees, that's what this is, so you want to follow that. Obviously, you can't have a forum. So just follow procedure.
I will follow up. I'm sorry?
Never say.
But, but if there's other members of council that, that could be involved, or, or something like that, that's outside of the safety committee, because you know, there are other things for the safety committee that we need to work on as well, but I appreciate that, thank you. But I will do my due diligence in terms of, of the ad hoc stuff, and, and we'll get that moving by the end of the week. All right, so, all right, so do we have a, a motion?
I, I'd like to move to approve the, the letter so that the mayor and the clerk can sign it.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? That's my sacrifice. Yes. Yes. No.
Thank you, council.
Yes.
Katie, how many rural people should we have for this?
I'll look and see, sort of just what the rules, but obviously, you know, yes, I'll be reaching out to you, if that's cool. Okay, so, we move on to new business. Item seven, item A, discussion and appropriate follow-up for West Liberty Economic Development Grant application request from Jim Keel on behalf of 101 East Third Street in the amount of $3,600. Yeah, let's, we'll, we'll wait, are, are you folks gonna stick around for the fun stuff, or you head now? I'll be reaching out to all of you in town.
You are.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. So, I will repeat what I just said, since there was some commotion. Discussion and appropriate follow-up for the West Liberty Economic Development Grant application request from Jim Keel on behalf of 101 East Third Street in the amount of $3,600. We'd had a motion, we'd had a sec, a motion from Jose and a second from, a second from Dana. Dana, any discussion? All those in favor? And that passes 5-0. Item B, resolution two zero two two zero six zero seven dash two five, a resolution to approve EMT full-time wages for Kathleen S. Moyle.
Motion.
Discussion.
I, I got some feedback that applies to the position in itself. I understand if Kathy's been working, she needs to be paid, absolutely. But I just wanted to, I still have some things that I need to look into and, and, and for other folks who have brought to my attention. So that's why I won't be approving this, but I just wanted to make that clear, that it's because I need to investigate a little bit more on something that is related, but just has nothing to do with her wages or anything like that, so.
Any other discussion? We have a motion. Oh, there was a motion, oh, duh, duh, sorry, guys. So we'll do the roll call vote, starting with Diane. Or, say, Omar. Yes, Dana, no, Jose.
Yes.
That'll pass for, for one. And we'll move to item C, resolution two zero two two zero six zero seven dash two six, a resolution deleting property from the West Liberty Urban Renewal Area.
Lee, what exactly this means?
If you want to have a motion and a second, and I think we'll move to discussion.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second. Second.
Okay. Okay, council members, that rights, council members, council members, and you have a mayor. So, the purpose of deleting the property set in the resolution is so the city can move forward to reset the TIF timeline on those properties, because there looks to be future development agreements. And so, in order to reset the, the timeline on a TIF property, then we, we delete them, and then we'll bring them back in, in the future for the amendments. And then again, it resets the TIF timeline.
Can you give me a better idea of where this is at?
So, the first prop, yeah, the first property would be, I think it has it in the address, it's the Fluffing Tiger Shop that.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and then the Mike's Bean lot, and the, the. That's just the simplest way to say.
Any other questions for that one, before I do a roll call?
I just, I'm sorry, I want to quickly add it, we, let's see here. No, that, that would be on that one.
Okay, so when would they, they be put back on?
They'll be put back on in a future amendment. Again, because originally those parcels were brought into TIF in 2015, so there's already the time between 2015 and now, and so in order to set future TIF for a 10-year, that's why we delete them, and then we would amend them back in, in a future based on.
Any other questions before vote?
Yes.
I think, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That passes 5-0. And we will move on to D ordinance two zero two two zero six zero seven dash zero four, resolution
Resolution 20220607-27, a resolution setting the date for public hearing on designation of the expanded West Liberty Urban Renewal Area and on urban renewal plan amendment with first reading and consideration to rate wave additional readings. Well, we have a motion.
So this one, what it is, it's, TIF is a very tricky thing. So again, so within this, you have to amend your ordinance in order to amend the urban renewal area. And so because you're wanting to have developments, and this is all a part of the amending, the attorney, the TIF attorney is putting this ordinance before you thinking that you would go ahead and waive the other two readings because again, it's all in part of the amending of the urban renewal. So it's just, it's just speeding up the process. And these parcels that are already thing in your urban, you're deleting them. And then it's just a formal process that has to be done in line with the urban law.
Okay. So because the agenda doesn't read properly. The first thing we're going to do is, we're going to do the ordinance, right?
Yes. Yep. The Resolution 27 is the next.
Is the next one.
Yep.
Okay. Read all one.
Yeah.
Okay. So is that what we have a motion on is the ordinance?
The ordinance. I, yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
No.
I thought it seemed like a lot of numbers and everything, but.
I don't know how many times we looked at this agenda and. Yeah. So it should be just the ordinance.
Just the ordinance.
And it's saying, because the next one is your resolution.
Is the resolution.
Public hearing.
All right. So do I understand we do have a motion and a second on the ordinance? Okay.
So, Councilman, we're going to do our roll call vote. Is that good?
Yes.
And did it, okay.
Again, so your motion.
The waiving of the second and third. Okay. Well, I'm just asking if this is what you're doing.
Yep, let's waive it. Let's waive it.
So the motion is the ordinance and to waive the first reading and then to waive the second and third readings.
Thank you, Diane.
Are we clear now? Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes. Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. 5-0. So now we can move on to E, which is actual Resolution 20220607-27, which is a resolution setting date for public hearing on designation of the expanded West Liberty Urban Renewal Area and on urban renewal plan amendment.
Motion.
Second. So in that, in the public hearing is when you will bring back your parcels and amend the urban renewal to reset the TIF timeline.
So when is an appropriate date or?
It should be June 21st and it was, no, wait, I got to go back to your. July 5th.
July 5th?
Yeah, because we have to have so many dates to post the public hearing on it.
So it'll be July 5th during the regular, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, the work session or?
Yep, during your regular.
And this is a roll call vote as well?
This would be just the, no, it is a roll call.
Yeah, it's a roll call resolution.
So do we have a motion?
We got a motion.
And Karen and I. Oh, and that's why we can discuss. Sorry, guys, short-term memory.
July 5th.
July 5th is when that's going to happen. So let's do roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. All right. We move on to item F. Sorry, that passes 5-0. And we'll move on to item F, set a date for a city council work session on June 21st, 2022. It's 6:30 PM.
And what are we talking about?
Yes.
I, so second council meeting is historically your work session meeting. So.
And I always ask, what are we talking about?
Correct. Historically, you always ask what are you talking about? So what would you like to talk about? I have not received any notes from city manager. I, I'm, I do not have anything to present for council. I do not know if it's a time that you would like to go ahead because you're planning on having discussion with regards to the resolution that you approve, the commitment to, the intent to work things out. So I don't know if you want to set aside that time to come back to council and bring an update.
For the ARPA?
Is that what you can all? Split it between, you could split it between the ARPA and the fire department update if you wanted to.
If there's, there is something that I'd like to discuss with council at some point. I don't want to bring it up right now.
Okay.
But.
So if you want to set it for, and we'll provide the future agenda on that work session. So you don't have to pick an agenda or pick an item. You can just set the work session.
Okay. And then this is also a roll call vote.
This would be just consent.
Okay. Do we have a motion for that work session? Yes, and then that's why we're discussing it. All those in favor? All opposed.
So I have to, was our motion?
I don't remember.
Who made the motion?
Nobody did.
I'm sorry, guys, I'm fried. You're beyond.
So I need a motion and then a second and then a consent.
Motion to set date for work session, June 21st, 6:30. One second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
All right, and this will be back at the West Liberty Cream Star.
So that's 5-0 for that work session. We will set a day, item G, set a date for public hearing fiscal year 2021-22, budget amendment, June 1st, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Motion. Discussion.
And that is, your amendment is in your packet and financially that goes in line with what we discussed. And those ones are in there. That's just process.
All those in favor? Any opposed? June 21st. I might have. Very real possibility.
I'm just taking what I really needed.
Okay, so that passes 5-0. I'm going to move on to reports. Leo, are you sticking with us, city engineer?
You're sleeping.
Leo. No, I'm sorry. I am with you. I couldn't find my unmute button. Sorry about that. I've got a quick report tonight. Well, number two. We have gotten a report from Northway. We've gotten the well log. There was a change in the water. The, I guess, the look of the water in the well around 600 feet. We couldn't see any problems with the casing from what we could see. We are sending the casing televising as well as the water quality reports to the DNR tomorrow. We're hoping that we can have a meeting with them. We are not going to give them our opinion. Our opinion at this point is that we think that the well could be used for another 15 years and we're very confident of that. But we need DNR to agree with that. So we're going to try to, hopefully they'll make their own decision and get back to us. I'll probably ask them for a meeting within two weeks. So hopefully by the end of June, we could have some kind of a answer from, from DNR if they're pleased with the way the casing looks. So that's, that's well number two. The, the next one is the Maxon and Rainbow lighting. We, BMHG did get us their electrical plan, which means the power plan of how that will all be relocated, as well as what they thought we should do as far as electrical for the lighting. We now have to come back to you with what are the fixtures going to look like? And what kind of fixtures? Those will, different fixtures have different, different light dispersion. So what we thought is for the next meeting, we'll have a meeting with your staff to go over three or four different kinds and then get back to you to make a final decision on where we go. Once that decision's made, we will be really close to just having the plans ready to go out for bids. So everything's in good shape there. And at that time, we'll have finance, financials for you also. And the last thing, the city in V and K have worked with West Liberty Foods on a grant with the Department of Energy for a digester. And then what would be done with the die, the gas? And could it be sold? Could the gas be used, reused to run the plant, run the, run West Liberty Foods? What we were told by Department of Energy is the preliminary application was, was accepted. And what they told me verbally was, once that's accepted, that means the grant's accepted. But they have now the final application, which is like two pages long. I got that two days ago from Michelle at West Liberty Foods. So we'll be filling that out this week. There's no financial cost to the city for this. It's basically staff time at West Liberty Foods. And then the rest of it will be grant money. And that's all I had unless anybody has any questions.
So did you talk to Michelle from West Liberty Foods today?
I did not talk to her today. No, I talked to her earlier this week.
You might want to reach out to her, re that, the digester stuff because there might have been some movement on that today.
I will, I will reach out to her tomorrow. Thank you. That's all I had unless you have other questions. Thank you.
City staff minutes?
And your committee minutes, we already provided.
And for committee minutes too, we reached out about the end of our minutes. So we will get those. Wow. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
All those in favor?
I opposed.